I'll open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Councilman Rocco, sorry, Rocco, will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first order of business we have, we do not have any presentations tonight, but we do have a public hearing on the town council's fiscal year 2024 proposed budget. I will ask Assistant Town Manager Sirioli to please read the notice for us tonight.
Notice is hereby given that the town of Plainville Town Council will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 3, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the municipal center for the purpose of hearing public comment on the town council's fiscal year 2024 proposed budget. Copies of the proposed budget are available at the town clerk's office during regular business hours dated Plainville, Connecticut, this 31st day of March 2023.
Thank you. Okay, I will just ask, could you just give a real quick, Michael, overview of the total budget, Board of Education, the town side, just so people can be aware of where we ended up? And if they wish to speak to it, they'll have those numbers available?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We have these handouts here, one-page handouts, if anyone's interested, summary. But I'll read through, this is, of course, our expenditure side. We're not here to set the mill rate or discuss revenues. It's merely the expenditure that we're looking for authorization. The town council proposes a budget of $24,998,890 for the general government, which includes $20,993,540 for the town government, general government, $3,930,350 for debt service, and $75,000 for capital projects. $43,071,797 is for the Board of Education, and that's a budget total of $68,070,687. This is an increase of $2,385,467, or a 3.63% increase over last year's budget. And again, we're not setting a mill rate, but as projected, presented, the mill rate would be estimated to be 31.42, or 0.78 mills higher than the current mill rate of 30.64. So that is all contained on these sheets that we have here, if anyone wants that. And that's essentially the summary for our budget proposed.
Okay, great, thank you for that. Thank you for the summary. If anybody wishes to look at one, they're available for your use. So at this point, I will open up the public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak to the town council, please go to the podium, state your name and address. Does anybody wish to speak to the town council regarding the FY 2024 proposed budget? Does anybody wish to speak? John.
John Kislick, 65 Forest Hill Avenue. United States of America is a great country. We could come here before you question your decisions, disagree with you, offer our own opinions without the threat of being incarcerated or dragged out in the street and beaten. Tonight, in case somebody forgot that, I brought a bodyguard with me. With that being said, you know, I'm going to be a little scattered tonight, because $68 million is a lot of money, and there's a lot of issues. The only thing I'll say about the Board of Ed, I mean, with their increase of 1.7 million, do you know, does the council know what percentage of that budget is salaries and benefits for teachers and administrators? So people will know how much goes just toward, you know what I mean? Does anybody know the percentage?
I think it's 80%, but I'm not sure.
It's close enough, that's what I thought.
Okay.
You're indicating 85.
Eighty-five, okay, so.
I just wanted to have brought out to the public that that's the biggest part of this budget. And what you got in contracts and that, you know, I'll vote the way I want to vote. The other thing, too, you know, the Republicans, five of you are on the council, and you campaigned on no new taxes. And to me, 3.63 is just like a new tax to me. That's pretty high, that's pretty steep. And I've been looking at a few of these departments, and I'll just name a few. One of them I brought up to you before, the Veterans Department, you dropped a $5,355, I guess almost half. You know, even if they don't need it and they don't use it, that's something that I don't think should ever be dropped. I mean, I know it's building up our budget, but these are our veterans. If they don't use it, it's going to come back in. And that really bothered me. I'm not a veteran, and that's why I feel this way, because these guys fought for me. And I don't think this council should have done that. Now, one other one to me, doesn't make any sense. You had Recycling Committee, they have an $800 budget, and this council actually took $10 off of their budget. I mean, why would you take $10 off a budget when we're talking $68 million? It just baffled me that you would even think about something like this. You know? And I looked at when you, I hope this isn't a three-minute thing on a public hearing.
Keep going, you can keep going.
Public hearings never are limited. You're going to limit me later.
Yes, John, we can turn that off during a public hearing, thanks. That's actually for your public comment section, so feel free to keep going.
You're practicing for me.
Keep going.
I looked at when you did your deliberations or whatever. On your first meeting, you met for two hours and 15 minutes and approved 33 departments. Then your next one, two hours, 16 departments. And your last one, 40 minutes, and you did the last three departments, the big ones. To me, that's less than five hours that you deliberated and came up with a budget of $68 million. I don't think you took my opinion, and I don't think you took enough of time in this, because I looked at every one of these that you approved, either zero, decrease, or whatever, and there's some big numbers in there that, in my opinion, there's no way you couldn't have taken more off to drop this thing down. You know, 3.63 is out of line, as far as I'm concerned. There's one other department, and I'm just asking this question on it, the water pollution. They have a four-and-a-half-million-dollar budget, and I believe that's the one where the people with their sewer fees pay for. And you are given an increase of $268,126, and I'm wondering why? The last I heard, that department was in pretty good shape. We had a really good surplus, so good that you didn't even have to increase our sewer rate fees. Why did you give that 2.6?
Well, John, you know that the sewer, you know that the sewer account is separate from the municipal spend, you know that.
Right.
And so it is supported by the sewer user fees. And so it does not affect our mill rate.
Well, where is the $268,000 coming from? And it says Water Pollution Fund, and it was raised 268. You know, I don't know as much as you guys, that's why I'm asking.
Well, I'm trying to explain that to you, how that, that's a separate account.
You know that.
And it's funded separately from the municipal side of the budget, and separately, of course, from the Board of Education budget. Now, if you need additional information, I'm going to ask the town manager to step in and help us with that. Can you help us, help John and me?
Yeah, much of it is in terms of highly regulated industry that has a lot of capital projects they still need to complete and maintain regulatory control over, in terms of meeting the conditions in terms of which they're permitted, as of Class IV facility. And it's a very expensive proposition. But I think, to the chair's point, that they, the rates, I think, have been, have been stable, and they continue to do, I think, a very good job in terms of managing the fund.
We also have had no sewer rate increase for three consecutive years, John.
I just said that, that we were stable, that you didn't even have an increase. But the 268 is, still has me baffled. Where it's coming from and what is being, you have it in the budget of an increase. So I still don't understand what it's being used for. If it's capital, it should be a capital project.
It's a separate entity from the town's capital, and it's a separate entity from the municipal side. We'd be happy to sit with you and go over the nuances of that particular budget, if you'd like.
I mean, Madam Chair, I have it in front of me, about $120,000 is due to full-time salaries. And I'll do this quick, and we can give you more detail if you want. You know, we do have for energy costs, we have about, it looks like a $24,000, $25,000 increase in heating oil, natural gas, gasoline, diesel. And debt service is going up $47,000. So those three items take up about, you know, 75% of the increase.
But it's a separate fund for everything, for the sewer department, shouldn't it come from there? It doesn't say that this is coming.
Well, it is, it does.
It's coming from our surplus in that fund?
Correct. Short answer, correct. I could give you the long answer, but why don't we do that later?
Okay. Now, one other thing. The money coming back from Wheeler, I think at the last meeting or so, I said maybe not get that for a year or two. But there's been news in the paper, the last guy who just took over for the other one that was fired, he quit because the state's moving too slow. I was thinking, maybe, because this has made the papers now in the news, maybe our people in Hartford from Plainville, our representatives, these guys are pretty sharp, maybe they'd be making some waves, and some of that money would come back a lot sooner to us, which will, I mean, it's an F again, but it looks like that, that could be a big thing for this budget, either going into our, just general fund, or for paying down debt. Let's see. Now, the other thing that I brought up to you before that you guys don't like is that the balloon festival, there's going to be a lot of expense in that, and I'm wondering what budget that's coming from. I know we have unclassified, we have $30,000 in it, but every department, the town manager's department, Financial Department, Building and Grounds, Roadways, and the police will be spending money on this. Is that going to just come from their regular budget, their overtime budgets, and their budgets to cover this cost? How's that going to work for an expense? How are you going to classify that?
Well, the balloon festival has historically been taken care of by the fire company, and they have, they know what it's going to cost to run that event. So we are currently talking to them about the costs of running the event. And one of the bigger costs of having that event is the buses and the porta-potties that have to be put outdoors, so those are very expensive items for them. There is going to be a fee charged for parking. So I'm, you know, to be, to give you a number, I can't do that right now, because it's still in the planning stages, we're still trying to calculate what, how much the parking is going to help offset some of the expenditures that typically go through the balloon fest. So we, and there was some conversation, I don't know if it's happened yet, but the vendors that will be participating in it, all the little booths and such, their fee will be increased. So there's a lot of things happening with that balloon festival that I don't, I don't know if we have the numbers specifically to give you right now.
Right. But like I'm saying, you know, the police, Building and Grounds, and Roadways are going to have overtime hours, so it's probably got to come out of their budget. Now, one other thing that irks me about this, I read a few years ago, when Sullington has their big festival and they closed down Route 10, the town makes a profit. They actually make a profit, and I don't think we're going to make a profit for the town on this. But that's one of the reasons I'm against this. Like I said, I don't think that you spent enough of time on this, and I wish that you would go over it and see if you can knock down a 3.63 a little bit more, because right now, the way it is, I have to vote no on it. I think it's too high, especially the way times are now. And when you look at some of them increases you gave, they're not, you kept the same as last year, and you increased, I mean, huge amount of money. So I wish you would look at it.
Yeah, no, I understand. And we did take a very hard look at this, and we are funding some of this budget through resources that we don't typically use. And we've looked at every, every account, and where can we transfer some revenue from to help offset some of the spending? And as has been told by, as you know, salaries and benefits have increased dramatically on both the board's side and the town council's side. Energy costs have increased dramatically, those things we have no control over, John.
I took those.
And we have not added any new staffing, so we're really, we tried very, very hard to keep this to where we hope it could be. Now, it didn't start out at .75 mill increase, you know that. You know the original request was much higher than a .75 mill increase. So to get to the end of it, I think what I can say to you is, we have not set the mill rate, we're still waiting for Hartford, perhaps, to come up with some other thinking and ideas. We're not sure if we can count on some other revenues that we can plan on, which would help, again, reduce that mill rate, but we have not set it yet for that reason.
I understand that all about the energy, because it hit me, too, and the salaries. But I took that into consideration, looking at some of the increases that I thought were a little, little bit too high. But the other fact, like I said, I would think that this council would have had to spend more than five hours on a $68 million budget. That's just my opinion. I know you guys are volunteers, and you worked, and you got a lot of stress and everything, but I thought $68 million should take a little bit more time and go in a little bit more in depth.
Where would you suggest we take that money from? I'm curious. Have you looked at the entire budget?
Yes, I did.
Okay, where would you suggest?
One of them was the thing on the sewer fund, that 264, if you're, it can't be taken.
Right.
I can't tell you right now each one, but I went over each one, and I said, you know, that thing could drop $10,000, they wouldn't even know the difference. And the same thing with, with the Board of Ed, I'm staying away from it. I like the superintendent, and he worked hard, and the members worked hard, but you tell me there's no more room in $1.7 million when you took $10 away from an $800 account?
Well, that's what we were told.
Well, you know, sometimes you gotta, gotta look into it. They say, you know, I read all this stuff, they go line by line by line, but those lines, numbers come from somewhere, and everything can be worked on. So I'm just, I'm just asking, I'm one person, and usually nobody listens to me, but what I like about it is with this country, I can come up here and say that, and, you know, I'm not going to get beat up right here. Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing?
Is it limited to budget?
Yeah.
Budget office limited to the budget?
Yes.
Uh huh. Does anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing? Mr. Frangos?
I'm going to hit a different note. I'd like to compliment the town council. I'd like to compliment the Board of Education on the budgets that presented. And the reason I do, I'm saying that to you, I see there's an increase, and we normally point the finger at the Board of Education, but if you look at, if I looked at what I'm looking at, it's correct, and I'm sure it is, the bulk of it is salaries and benefits. And if we don't have salaries, if we don't have benefits, then we're not going to have teachers. It's that simple. If it was some lollygagging thing, you can take it from there, it'd be one thing. I don't see any problem with this. In fact, call things considered, I think it's well done, you work well together on this. The only question I would have, and I would direct this to our Board of Education, is it says other purchase services-tuition. What is that, what is tuition?
Go ahead, I don't know that everybody can hear you, but...
Yeah, just, I'll place Mr. Wilson, select special education needs we can't meet.
Yeah, okay.
They're only the most extreme needs that we can address.
Did you hear that?
Yes.
Okay.
And with that, that's fine. The only other thing, too, and I'm being prompted here by John, regarding the festival, I think it's, I think it's a one-night festival, Saturday, was it Saturday night?
Friday night.
It's going to be Friday night into Saturday, right? And I think it's a tradition with Plainville, and I don't think, I think people could handle that for one night. And that's just my feeling about it. I will conclude that by saying, well, this was a couple of years ago, I remember leaving Nazo's, and I got stuck in the middle of the traffic, and you're looking around, saying, and then all of a sudden, you see parents walking down the streets with the kids, with the balloons and the hot dogs and everything, and that makes you feel well. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else? Last chance. Okay, I will close the public hearing. Thank you for your participation, as always, and move on to our next item of business. Minutes of the previous meeting, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, please?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to approve the minutes of the March 2023 regular meeting, March 21, 2023 special meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Announcements and reports, does anybody have any announcements or reports tonight? Not your week, Rosemary? Nope. Okay, that's fine. I would just like to make a note of the passing of one of Plainville's very well-known residents who had, who has dedicated decades of time to serving the community. Sally Miller, who is the chair on the Committing on Aging, passed away on March 26 after a brief illness. She was a dedicated, dedicated member of the Plainville Senior Center. She was, I believe, past president of the AARP, and she had spent her whole adult life volunteering for Plainville. So I just would like to make a note that she did pass, and certainly leaves, certainly leaves a void in all activities regarding senior center and other community events. So, all right. If there are no other announcements and reports, we will move on to item number five, appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. There are none listed on our agenda, but does anybody have anything they'd like to bring forward? Okay, go on with that. Board of Ed is for our next meeting. Report of the town attorney, do we have any report tonight?
An opening, on the Aviation Council, Aviation Board.
I beg your pardon?
I understand it's an opening on the Aviation Board.
I can't hear.
Opening on Aviation Commission, is there an opening?
Um, I'm not sure, do we have an Aviation Commission opening? We do, yes.
So I spoke to the town manager, can I speak directly to the manager? I spoke to him about three, four weeks ago, and he mentioned that they needed a member, they had an urgent opening, and I expressed my desire.
Okay, great. If you wouldn't mind contacting the town manager, we just need you to apply, just fill out an application, and we'll go forward. Thank you. Okay, if there are no other appointments and reappointments, Board of Education is next time, we don't have the report of the town attorney. So we're on to...
Madam Chair, I do have a...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I do. The issue was raised the last meeting regarding the balloon festival, again, someone had mentioned the deed from 1928 that granted the property to the town, and there are a few land restrictions, and someone, this is an opinion we had given a few years ago, someone was questioning whether or not the balloon festival was legal because of the restrictions in the deed. And there are only four restrictions, horse racing, I don't think the balloon festival would qualify as horse racing, circuses, which is not a circus, it's not a professional baseball game. The only other item that is restricted on the land is carnivals. So the town attorney's office did some research on the definition of a carnival back in 1928, when this deed was created, and our opinion is that the balloon festival is not a carnival. Carnivals are a traveling entertainment entity, many of them have rides, mechanical rides, there is also games, competitions, and oftentimes games with animals and things of that sort. So we had given that opinion a few years ago, and our opinion hasn't changed.
Great, thank you for that update, we appreciate it. Okay, now, on to the town manager's report.
Good evening, yes, I have...
And Michael?
I have five items, six, actually five, that I'll report on, and then six is happening, because I'll turn that over to Andy. First item, number one, charter revision. The Charter Revision Commission recently completed their mandatory review of the entire charter, including the three items charged to them by the town council. The commission has not officially recommended any revisions, but they are in schedule to submit their final report to the town clerk on June 5. The assistant town manager, assistant town attorney, and town clerk are drafting new language and providing clarification for certain sections of the charter. They will make a presentation to the commission at their next meeting, and a special meeting of the commission is being considered and is likely to be called for Monday, April 17, to review the information provided by town staff. So they are engaged, and they are very actively engaged in reviewing the charter, and that process is moving along, so I wanted to give that update to the council. Item number two is the Aviation Commission update. There are several items there for the aviation, been very busy, but the first, the repair of the administration building roof is underway. Simon Roofing is waiting for materials to be delivered, and when this happens, they'll schedule the project with the town for the work to proceed. Interstate Aviation also reported a roof leak on the maintenance hangar. The town's Building and Grounds Division identified the cause of the leak to be an exhaust vent, and they applied a temporary solution, silicone, around the problem area. And so the roof is still under warranty, and the ultimate construction company that put it in was called out to repair the leak, and they will visit the airport, visit the airport, and they'll be back after a rain event, and we're trying to track down whether or not they were here on Saturday or after Saturday to check that out. We just don't know yet, but Andy's going to track that down. The food truck battles will no longer be taking place at Robertson Airport, as we had reported. We had been in negotiations and talks with a group of organizers, and they informed us that they have moved their event back to their original location of Nogatuck, so we will not have the food truck battles this year. However, we are moving forward with Next Gen Car Show, which is still on schedule for Sunday, April 30, from 12 to 6. Next Gen anticipates making a contribution, hopefully upwards of $5,000, to a local Plainville charity upon the completion of the event. The amount is based upon the anticipated revenues and can be adjusted if there's inclement weather, so that remains to be seen, what that donation will be. The commission is also, you know, having discussions regarding a tribute for William O'Leary, who passed away in a car accident, and the assistant town manager and superintendent of Building and Grounds are exploring options with respect to creating some type of memorial with a tree and plaque, and so they are working on that. And the Joint Robertson Airport Lease Negotiations Subcommittee has been meeting regularly in executive session to review the current lease agreement with Interstate Aviation and negotiate terms for a new agreement. The subcommittee is evaluating the services of a consultant to assist with reviewing the structure and components of the lease, and I think that is, I think, on the face of it, seems like a move in the right direction to assist the group, to make sure that we get the right clarification, right structure in that, and that we're reviewing and comparing other comparable leases within the state of Connecticut and possibly New England. So that is ongoing and is moving along. Item number three is the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail Alignment Update. The Farmington Canal Trail currently ends in Plainville at the Northwest Drive in the city of Johnson Avenue. From this location, the trail must extend southerly, and there is no practical corridor that exists easterly of Johnson Avenue. that exists easterly of Johnson Avenue. The town owns various parcels between the current trail terminus and Route 177 southerly of Northwest Drive. As a result, the town and the state have been putting their heads together and trying to utilize the airport property, Perrin Road, Tomaso Park, the landfill property, roadways property and various other open space properties were considered to try and find the most practical trail corridor. So in that section that has recently, the Conservation Committee has reintroduced their objection of using Tomaso Nature Park. Their latest objections seem to be centered around the separation of the two facilities and how more activity in the area will disturb the character of the park. Currently, the proposed trail corridor skirts the easterly limits of Tomaso Nature Park, utilizing an existing path. So an absolute separation between the two facilities, a multi-trail and the nature park, can be achieved only with fencing and landscaping. It can be done. So I think there is a compromise in the works to be able to coexist, if you will. But it's gonna mean some type of split rail fence or landscaping or low beam fence, you know, because you can't, you can't put up a chain link fence to restrict the movement of wildlife. And so that's, that's the issue we're dealing with. But again, trying to, you know, hear the concerns of the Conservation Committee and their concerns about the nature of the park being a very zen-like park and not introducing a whole lot of activity through there. So I think there's a practical solution there that will skirt the nature park and not have a direct entrance or multiple entrances there and be able to go in the perimeter around the park. So the next item I have is Honor Heights Sewer Extension Project Bid. So we've had a lot of discussion on this lately as this project evolves. The original cost estimate done by the town engineer more than 18 months ago targeted a range of between 1.5 million and 2 million. The town recently opened bids for the project at the, project. And we had seven proposals submitted and we opened seven bids. And the good news is that the apparent low bidder came in at $1,186,260. So, very good. And I say apparent low bidder because there's more due diligence to do. Tiger Bond is assisting with the review. And once they have completed their due diligence, a recommendation will be made to the town council. And I expect that that recommendation will be coming to you for our next meeting on April 17th to award that project, which is estimated to begin in June 2023. So we're on track, so good news with respect to the bid openings.
That's a nice surprise.
Yes, it is. Yeah, considering we were really bracing for the higher number of 2 million.
Yep, that's great.
And again, just so you know, I don't have the full details, but I know that the seven did span from 1.1 all the way up to 1.9 million in there. So, and again, due diligence, but every indication is that is a company known and done business here and also to Tiger Bond. So we're just waiting that final review. My next item, item five is fair housing. April is designated as Fair Housing Month as a recipient of a small city's community development block grants. The town has ongoing obligation to acknowledge our commitment to fair housing. And so there are three items under new business. That would be, one, re-adopt the resolution entitled Fair Housing Resolution. Two, reappoint the town manager as the Fair Housing Officer and authorize town manager to sign and implement the Fair Housing Statement. And three, authorize the town manager to sign and implement Title VI Equal Opportunity Statement. I do have some additional little bullet points in terms of just a few quick facts, if you will, for the fair housing. For the town, I believe it goes back to the 1980s in terms of its participation. The last grant to the town was in 2015, an $800,000 grant, which the town, what we do in terms of turning that money around is to offer loans for housing rehab. And these are housing rehab loan funds for low to moderate income individuals. And we've been successful and that has continued to revolve in terms of working on just program income for these projects, about three to five projects a year. These loans are deferred principal and interest on the payments. We get paid back when the, when the homes are sold or there's a transaction. And in the low to moderate income, just to give you a flavor, a one person, single would have an income limit of 62,000, so it'd have to be under that. Family of four would be 89,400. And those are all, you know, state federal guidelines that we, we look at. The average project loan is around 30,000. And we currently have a waiting list for the program. So some of the, not all, I'm sorry, I should have actually dived in to get more information, but I understand this is, this is an annual process that the town goes through and I just wanted to give you a little bit more detail to that.
Okay.
And that is my items and I will turn over happenings to Andy unless we can pause if there are any questions with those five items. I'd be happy to answer.
Well, we'll hold them until Andy's all done and carry on. Thank you.
Sounds good. Street sweeping began today on Monday, April 3rd. This operation will continue for the next six weeks throughout town. And residents are advised not to rake grass, rocks or sticks into the street as those types of debris can damage the equipment. And obviously this is weather permitting, so on nice, not rainy days, roadways will be out there. The transfer station on Granger Lane is set to open for the season this Saturday, April 8th. The hours of operation will be Saturdays only from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And the transfer station is only open to Plainville residents. An ID is required and no commercial vehicles or businesses are permitted to discard material. There is a fee for the disposal of items and you can refer to the town's website under Transfer Station Ordinances for fees and a list of accepted items. If you have any questions, you can direct them to the Public Works Administration at 860-793-0221, extension 7176. Spring bulk pickup is scheduled to start next Monday, April 10th, and it will end on June 26th. Plainville has an on-demand policy for the collection of bulk pickup. Residents who currently have curbside trash and recycling collection are eligible to receive one bulk pickup per calendar year, free of charge. And this is for any acceptable large items that do not fit in the normal waste collection. You can visit the town of Plainville's website at www.planevillect.com for a complete list of acceptable bulk items and instructions on how to request a pickup. After this spring collection, the next collection will be in the fall. From the Recreation Department, registration for summer programs for the Plainville, for Plainville residents open today. Non-residents can sign up for Plainville Summer Programs beginning Monday, April 17th. If you'd like to learn more information or register for the programs, you can go online at planevillect.reckdesk.com. And the summer brochure has also been posted to the town of Plainville's and the Recreation Department's Facebook pages. Pavilion rentals and season pool passes are also available to the public starting today. So you can request or register for both of those, also on the Recreation webpage as well. The Animal Control and Police Department are conducting a bottle and can drive. And this is also in conjunction with Plainville Paws. The bottle and can drive is running through the entire month of April and bottles and cans can be dropped off at the pound on Granger Lane, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Youth Services, the Plainville Youth Services Coalition for Positive Youth Development is sponsoring Hidden in Plain Sight Mock Bedroom during the Superintendent's Showcase on Thursday, April 20th from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM. Hidden in Plain Sight is an interactive presentation for adults and parents to raise awareness of signs that may point to risky adolescent behaviors. Open to adults only, this program recreates a mock teenager's bedroom or backpack that parents, grandparents, educators, caregivers and other adults can explore to identify hidden drug paraphernalia and warning signs associated with drug or alcohol abuse by a teen. And finally, from the Senior Center, and for information on any of the Senior Center programs, you can call the Plainville Senior Center at 860-747-5728. And all programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. The first is a COVID-19 Booster Clinic. This is open to the public and walk-ins only. On Monday, April 10th, 9:30 AM to 12:00 PM at the Senior Center, the clinic is made possible through a grant received by the Wheeler Clinic from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. Caregiving Connections on Tuesday, April 11th at 10:00 AM. Individuals providing 24/7 care are invited to join the support group to discuss their experiences and their challenges. Clownin' Around, come meet Valentine the Clown on Wednesday, April 12th at 1:30 PM. Valentine will demonstrate makeup application, discussing clown life and entertain with balloons and magic. And there will be circus treats served as well. The Breakfast Club will be meeting on Tuesday, April 18th at 9:00 AM. You can call the Senior Center to get the location of where the breakfast will occur. But this club meets regularly for an informal breakfast at a restaurant in Plainville. And it's a group of friends to get together and to talk. And you'll order and you'll pay on your own, but it's an opportunity to go visit different restaurants throughout the town. Dementia Friend, become part of a global movement. On Thursday, April 13th from 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM, find out how dementia affects a person and how to help people throughout the community. And finally, Grandparents Raising Grandchildren on Tuesday, April 18th at 10:30 AM. This is an opportunity to share resources, ideas, struggles, joys and more with others who are raising grandchildren. And that is all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you both, Michael and Andy. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding their report? Okay, great job. Thank you so much. All right. Okay, moving on to our next agenda item is our Public Comments section during this time. The public is welcome to come to the podium. You will have three minutes to address the council. Please state your name and address when you can get to the podium. So, does anybody have any comments that wish to speak to the council?
Good evening. My name is James Paul Thomas and I live on One Seneca Road.
Thanks.
Corner of One Seneca and Mete Comet. I think I spoke to the town manager maybe two to three weeks ago about the dangerous situation that exists on that road. I know whoever did the traffic study, I don't know what, didn't put too much thought into it. They put speed bumps on the flat part of Mete Comet. Now, everybody knows that you speed going downhill and you speed going uphill. And there are no speed bumps on that hill. And my street intersects Mete Comet right at that point in the middle of the hill. I have almost gotten rear-ended several times. And unfortunately, it's mostly not neighborhood people. It's people that are taking a shortcut to avoid the light at Cook Street in West Maine. They fly up through there not aware of the environment and neighborhood. And I really would appreciate if somebody could look into putting a speed bump somewhere in the middle of that hill.
Okay, well, we'd have to, first of all, have our police department do a study. They can do some counts and speeds and things like that. Would that be the next step, Michael?
They've done that already. Before they installed the speed bumps that are presently there, that study must have been done already. So you wouldn't need to do another study.
Okay, but you're speaking about a different specific intersection at Seneca?
No, it's on Mete Comet Road. As soon as you come off between the two car dealers, there's a set of S-turns. And once people do those S-turns, they fly up that hill doing 50, 55 miles an hour. And also when they come down the top of Pinnacle Mountain, they're doing 50, 55.
Over the speed bumps?
Speed bumps are up on where it's level and there's several stop signs. So people do go slow through that section. But once they get past that section, especially being frustrated, commuter time they use as a shortcut, they don't have any patience. I've almost gotten rear-ended several times because my driveway is the first driver on the left-hand side as soon as you turn onto Seneca. People fly by at Seneca doing 50 miles an hour.
Okay.
So there's no need for another study. There's a need to do something because there's gonna be a serious accident sooner or later. There's gonna be a serious accident there. And I'm trying to warn you people about a dangerous situation that exists there.
Sure. Can we have the chief or the traffic group? I know somebody's in charge of traffic studies and things like that. Take a look at that area?
We'll absolutely have an internal review and we'll take a look at the study. Take a look at the, we'll be out there to take a look at it.
We will, we will do that.
Okay, one more other, one more issue.
Go ahead.
Does the town have a pre-disaster plan for a derailment in the center of town like what happened in Ohio just recently?
I don't know.
Do you know exactly what chemicals are going through the center of this town? Even though the trains go slow, all the railroads are doing it. They're putting worn-out railroad cars on the rails and we're not aware of what chemicals or how to deal with them in case there's a spill of some sorts. It doesn't have to be a fast derailment. All it has to do is be one, one car lose a wheel and the tank cracks, you've got an issue in the center of town. And we're in a valley, all the chemical fumes are gonna hang right in the center of town for, when there's no breeze, it could be a disaster for the town of Plainville, just like it is in Ohio.
Of course. We can find out. I do know that propane is often traveling on those...
Well, that's not, that's a dangerous chemical in itself.
Right, it's going down to the propane on South Washington Street. However, I don't know what else may be in those cars, but we could probably find out about that for you.
And one other comment, the water in Plainville sucks, excuse my language.
One more thing?
It's a plumber's, it's a plumber's dream. I've had to replace appliances in my house three times over since I've been here for 10 years because of the corrosion of water causes on the water appliances. I know there's talk of building a filtering plant of some sort. And I understand years ago, we had an option of connecting with New Britain Reservoir. And New Britain Reservoir water tastes like honey. It's delicious.
Yep.
Why, there's a controversy of why we didn't hook into New Britain's water supply. And also now they've been demanded to stop the rate increase. Aquarian came in and increased the rates and did not even attempt to filter the water. So the increase was not justified. They were ordered to cease and desist the rate increase, I think, right that day on the news. So that's a whole nother issue we need to...
Sure, well, no, just to update, the Valley Water Company, who owned the water company prior to Aquarian taking over, is building a treatment center off of Woodford Avenue. And that is to address the hardness of the water, which is, you know, problematic for a great many people in town. When you talk about the plumbing and your fixtures and dishwashers and such. So that treatment facility is going to be designed to reduce the hardness, not for the entire system, but for that, that wellhead on Woodford Avenue where that water comes out of. So we are looking forward to having that completed. It should be done this year sometime.
Is there gonna be a rate increase to cover that?
They will not be able to put through a rate increase until it's completed. And it's actually begun under Valley Water. So now Aquarian owns the company. I'm not really sure how that's all gonna work out, but that's conceivable that there would be an increase to cover that capital expense for them, yes.
All right, I've already spent thousands of dollars on new appliances and just wondering if I'm gonna have to pay a rate increase also. Thank you for your time and thank you for hearing me out.
You're very welcome. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? John?
Surprise, huh? I forgot to mention something that when we used to have that public hearing, you had to have auditoriums, the high school auditorium, the middle school. Now it's me and Lou, opposite sides, but that's great. That's what it's all about. Anyway, what the town attorney said, I accept it. I asked for his opinion and he gave it, so that's fine. But on that conditions, there's another one. There's a rumor about closing up the back entrance to Norton Park and building something for roadways. I have nothing against roadways, but it says, "Nor shall any part of said land be used for building sites other than those which are necessary for the development, enjoyment of said land for municipal park purposes." So I let that go. Now, my main thing today, as I brought it up to you before, Lisa Lozier, the, the one completely against conservation methods, she's on the Conservation Commission, she's at it again. She tried to stop fishing at Pottery Ruski and they shot her down. She has a new thing, you're gonna get communication from Park and Rec with her new wish list, additional signage. There's plenty of signage there already. She wants to change the park hours, no ice skating. It's already listed, no ice skating and swimming. and, and swimming, wants no boats on the pond, and to close the boat launch area, all to turn this into a goose sanctuary. Now, one of the things she's saying was the park is too small, the pond's too small. The pond is 15-point acres, and to give you a comparison, Norton Park is listed as 16 acres. It is not too small. And there's people that have houses on, on the pond, they have boats there to go, and you probably never get more than six canoes or kayaks in the summertime there. They would take up less room than the geese that are sitting on that pond every day. So to me, it's, it's a no-no. And also, what I was saying, you know, that would be like somebody from Park and Rec saying, "You got to close a pavilion because it's too small, it has too much use, and sometimes you find litter." It's, it's, she's completely ridiculous. I checked on when her commission is due, January 15th, 2025, and I don't know if the park can survive with her being on that commission that long. I asked you before to remove her, you probably don't want to, but somebody needs to talk to this person and tell her she is not in charge of that pond, she can't make up the rules to turn it into a goose sanctuary. Something's got to be done. You're going to be getting this confirmation, this communication, I'm going to go to the next Park and Rec and give my spiel to them. This, this lady is completely off the wall, the park is for the people, for the enjoyment of people, recreation, and she's, she's off the wall. So, I wish somebody from the council would talk to her, do something about her, because I don't want to see boating stopped for, somebody want to come out there with their canoe or their kayak, a family, and the pond is huge. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm not good with these. Can you hear me? Bethel Harrison, 10 Mancini Way. I'm here as the Vice President of the MSPPTC, and I just wanted to represent the PTC and follow up with our invitation that we had sent. We did receive an email back today, and we wanted to say thank you, that the town manager and any town council members that can attend will attend. We did want to follow up again that we know it's short notice, we had to rearrange our schedules, we just were trying to get something, you know, in with April vacation, the week after. It just, that's just what happened. So just on our end, too, we had to, you know, make room and make time for, for us as well. But just wanted to follow up on that invitation and invite, and in hope that you all come. We just want to hear from you, in a non-maybe political setting, and that, that's really it, it's just a friendly invitation, there's no, you know, I don't know, there's just no angles, we're just coming to you as the MSPPTC and just wanted to, we thought it was a good idea, and wanted to invite you. So I'm just here to, as a follow-up invitation.
Are you monitoring the email?
Yes.
I, I responded today.
You, okay, I, well, I don't get the direct email, I get, I'm the Vice President, so it goes to the President.
Okay.
And then I get it. So if you responded after that, then it's probably in my email now.
Okay.
I will check, so thank you, I appreciate that.
Yep. Yep. Thank you for creating the event. Certainly, more information is never a bad thing, and I will be there, and I'm interested in taking a tour. I've been in the middle school a number of times in the past, but not recently, of course. So I, I am doing my very best to get there for 6:30, but I'll absolutely be there for 7:00.
Great, thank you.
Of course.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so?
I have just one more thought here. Want to be feasible.
If you could, okay. Generally, it's a one-time event to speak to the council, but I can give you just a few seconds if there's something you forgot to say.
We'll put a local traffic-only sign.
Can we have your name and address again?
James Paul Thomas, 1 Seneca Road, Plainville.
Okay.
Maybe a local traffic-only sign might deter speeders on a temporary basis before a speed bump is put in.
Okay, thank you, we'll have, we'll have it looked at.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Just informational, I think, you know, that study and the communications with the people on Mete Comet Road, I think it was about 2016.
Probably all of that.
Yeah, I think it was right about 2016, there was a meeting here, everybody, it was on Mete Comet Road was invited to.
Right.
And I think that was November 2015, then I think it was in the year after that it was looked at, then the speed bumps.
Mm-hmm.
But I just think that was the approximate timeline, I thought it might be helpful for Michael to know, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Yep. Thanks, Rosemary. Okay, I will close the public comment section and move on to our next item. We do not have any old business tonight, so we will go into our new business section, and I need a motion for item number one, please, regarding the budget.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to approve the General Government Fiscal Year 2024 Budget, including debt service and capital projects of $24,998,890. The second part, the Board of Education Fiscal Year 2024 Budget, $43,717,097, for a total expenditure budget of $68,070,687.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Just to note again that we are going to, the, the mill rate will not be set tonight, and that's going to determine the cost to the taxpayer. We're only approving the expenditure side of the budget, and the mill rate is considered part of our revenue stream, so we will be doing that probably. Michael, what do you think, June, early part of June or so?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
I think, but maybe we can, I can get an answer for you at the next meeting, yes.
We'll see, hopefully we'll get some good news. That's just a point of information. Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to adopt the resolution entitled Fair Housing Resolution.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to appoint Town Manager Michael T. Polis as the Fair Housing Officer and authorize him to sign and implement the Fair Housing Statement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to authorize the town manager to sign and implement the Title VI Equal Opportunity Statement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. So, do we have any other items for discussion or interest tonight?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed under the.
Oh, sorry, I thought we did that. You're right. I have a second and a motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Now, we'll go to item 12, other discussions of interest. Michael, do you have anything you'd like to bring to us?
Yeah, just the, just FYI, the Fire Department Monthly Report for March should be at your seat, the statistics there, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you so much. Everybody got a copy of that?
Yep.
Okay, great. Anything from anybody else? It's almost 8 o'clock, and Yukon plays at what time?
9:15.
15? All right. There we go. All right, we do not have an executive session tonight, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you very much.